I have a form, uh, fill these out. Uh, I did acknowledge the guests that are here today. Uh, do we have anybody set up for the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. I guess we'll close the public hearing and go into the consent agenda. Um, now you said you're working on the minutes for the previous one?
Yes, and hopefully after the high skims, I'll be home. Um, I'll be able to have him caught up so the next court meeting, you should have more.
Okay. Um, do we have any, uh, oaths or bonds to accept? I don't think we have any of those. Um, monthly departmental reports. They're, they've all been turned in, that I'm aware of.
I seen the treasures report, I think it was precinct, precinct one. I didn't see a lot of the boards other than that, in the packet anyways.
I have to find mine, I just put it in there, but I think we missed some rejective reports.
So we, we talked about back, uh, months or so back about tax, the tax office reports coming to Commissioner's Court and looking for that, you know, each month we're supposed to have, you know, the amount collected and those things in, um, this is the end of November or so. I don't know, I know we haven't any person there. I need to follow up, make sure that those reports comes before the court.
I'll follow up with her and make sure we start getting monthly reports.
Yeah.
We don't have any, does anybody have any continuing education certifications?
Every day.
All right. Um, I made the motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, I made a motion second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor? All against? All right, item number one, we'll deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is take action on quote from Wind Text Tower LLC for repairs to the Bleakwood Communications Tower for $46,927. Now they'll install three inner anchors, uh, put new guide wires on 400-foot tower, install new hardware, which is turnbuckles, ankles, stumbles. Basically what it is, the, uh, the anchors have rusted out on the, on the ground on the tower, so it's a danger of, uh, really high wind taking it down. So we need to spend the money to ensure that we can keep that tower up instead of having to buy new one. And we just put a new one in South County, so we know where that goes. And that's the tower at, uh, at Bleakwood, at precinct one. You know what? We're not online. Cause I'm in red here.
Sorry guys.
All right. For all y'all online, sorry for the, the delay there. We had, uh, had a little difficulty getting online, uh, soon.
Is our tax office online, Jim?
Yes, she's okay.
I don't see if I'm online. As far as the, uh, communication towers, does anybody have any, any questions or, or comments on that?
So you, you know, we've talked about, um, the possibility of using towers in Jasper. I do, you know, some of that, I mean, whether we do or don't, it sounds like we've got a risk here on this tower, you know, toppled next spring in a storm or something, got residents and motors and everything else. So I made the motion that we, uh, so before I make this motion, I haven't looked at all of the quotes or bids or, you know, you and Mark have been handling this, this is the one that you guys think we need to go with to get this tower in a safe, secure place where we don't have anybody, no harm or damage.
This, this is a company that installed the tower in?
South County.
South County. While they were here, they come and dug up the anchor points on it. The guide wires have too much tension on them now, you know, they're in danger of, but...
And from a bidding process, I guess an auditor, everybody feels good about this tower, about this company and?
I'm never saying to bid, I'm just saying that...
Well, this is the only, this is the only company that did it.
Okay. So your office went out for bids?
No, we didn't go out for bids, we went out, well, we asked for quotes on, on fixing the tower. So this company's...
So we never, what you're saying is we never advertised?
No, we didn't advertise it, but it's under 50,000.
So we did telephone quotes, so we follow our purchasing procurement policy that's in place right now, because anything over 20 to 50,000, you have to do telephone quotes. Did we call, did we do any of that?
No, they just got a bid from the only company that's around, or where are they at? They're six hours away.
Basically what you're saying is the sole source type of quoting, or is that good with that? Okay.
Yeah, if they're the only ones that do it, with nobody else around and they're kind of a specialty, then that's an exception.
So that's, yeah, the sole source.
So I guess per our procurement policy, we really don't, I mean, we don't have to approve this today, cause it's under 50,000, your office is handling it, you can just go ahead and take action to do it, I mean, if you want the court to approve it.
I, I just want to run it through the court to approve it, because, you know, we've, we've got to get the tower fixed. And then there's, uh, that cog is coming along, uh, they've got the interoperable multiple county jurisdiction and I've got an email on it this morning. They're putting something over on the cell phone tower off Carrillo Lane, but it's, it's for more of the state. I'm not sure how that's going to help Newton County out, but it will improve radio communications for DPS and a lot of them across state, so. Where should the financing come from? That's where the auditor comes in.
You'll have to do a budget amendment. I want to pull my new campaign money from the budget for it, so you'll have to do a budget amendment.
Yes. So you have, how much do we have in contingency at this point?
Uh, he, I need to look and see, but I'm pretty sure he's pretty much to put the contingency that we had, so he would have to pull it from the cash over.
Yeah. Well, so, so let's just tell me now, so anything over 50,000, the court has to approve? Anything above 20,000, auditor's office or the judge's office goes out for bids on? Anything under 2,000, we can just buy right out? And then 10,000, there's phone quotes, anything under from two to 10, we gotta do phone quotes. So really what we need to do is take no action on this item, you guys figure out where the money's coming from and then just manage it, because it don't really require Commissioner's Court. Now, the budget amendment might require Commissioner's Court.
Yeah, it will, it will, um, the budget amendment will have to come through Commissioner's Court once it gets to my office.
Well, I just, I'm gonna make the motion that we table it until we find out where the money's coming from, or then move out on the budget amendment. Not that we don't need to do the work, we just need to get everything aligned.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Proud of the Table?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
All against.
All right. Item number two is take action on payment request number eight from LaBeach Architectural Group in the amount of $71,808 to N and D Construction for renovations made to the Newton County Court Department. All right, that's the, uh, citizen tile in the courtroom that they've replaced. And 51,000 of that is covered by the county historical grant, the courthouse. That's 51,000 left in the, in the grant funds, so Newton County is liable for it.
21,808.
21,808. And that's from the water leak in the attic where they had to replace or pull the ceiling tile down, and then there was no manufacturer, so they had to get a company to make a stamp to stamp those, uh, aluminum panels. It was fake. So they finally got them done and makes it pretty dang close.
So where's this money coming from?
This money actually comes from, we apply?
Not, not the 21, where are you pulling the 21 from?
It's gonna have to be moved from contingency over to this.
So no budget amendment?
It will be moved, aligned out of from contingency over to this line.
But we don't need to, but, do we need to do a budget amendment for this action?
I'm going during my budget amendments.
Today?
Yes. So I can get this paid.
And then once we get it paid, we'll get to 51, we'll have to send in the paperwork and get the 51,000 back from Historical Commission.
It's very, very important, I get that on this.
So do we need to do this from now, Judge? Do we need to do it in combination with number seven?
I guess we could take action on, on pay requests, then when we get down to item number seven, full budget request, number 21,808.
But you're gonna actually pay the whole amount out of share, you're gonna pay the whole thing out of contingency and file the paperwork. Okay. So I'm going to make the motion that we take action, pay the 71,808 to cover the renovations made in the courtroom, the courthouse, give a injunction for the budget amendment that we'll file.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Proud.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hopson, all in favor?
All against.
All right, item number three, a review action taken by Commissioner's Court on November 13th, 2025 regarding the construction bids for GLO CBPG Regional Bit Program Community Shelter, that's GLO contract number 24-065-03, and take appropriate action immediately.
Judge, at this time, I would ask that we, we, uh, come executive session for consultation with the county.
Okay. All right. Good session. Now we'll go back to item number three, a review action taken by Commissioner's Court on November 13th, 2025 regarding the construction bids for GLO CBPG Regional Bit Program Community Shelter, which is GLO contract number 24-065-03, and take appropriate action immediately.
So Judge, you wanna get some background on the previous decision or?
Okay, on the previous decision, uh, the county took the recommendation of, uh, our engineer firm that was hired to, uh, handle the bids in the construction phase, which is doing master's, uh, and they recommended, uh, we had six bids, three were rejected, uh, they, they recommended going with the lowest bid. Uh, so after discussion in court, uh, the majority of the court approved to go with the lowest bid. So, and after that, some, uh, some discussion was made on the bid packets, you know, the commissioners didn't have a chance to look at them before, the engineer firm presented to the court, made a decision, you know, so, and that's where we're at now. You know, some questions arose after the award. Bounded on the floor. That's where we're at on the front now.
So I was the one that had reservation after the court, asked the county judge and attorneys to sit in, because we did not have the opportunity, we did not receive the bid packages until the week after GLS made the recommendation in open court to go with C most, uh, which had the lowest total bid according to GLS. Um, but they also at the same time had the highest bid to the taxpayers from the county, uh, at least 30% higher than the next highest bid for the kitchen equipment, which we're gonna pay for. GL has already said that they are not paying for commercial kitchen equipment. So C most bid was 297,000, uh, the next closest to them was 200,000, and then the other bids were well below the 200,000 for them. So, uh, that, during that, that was a discussion point in that meeting as well, but, um, I know the court is, is, you know, is mixed on this and we heard open meetings, actually we didn't make any decisions in executive session, but, um, based on legal counsel, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, may not, may not get us grounded, but I'm gonna make the motion that we conduct a workshop inviting all the bidders that took part in the bidding process, even those ones that were discarded by GLS, because when you said three of them were discarded, they were discarded by GLS, the court never got a chance to even, uh, consider those folks. So I'm gonna make a motion that we conduct a workshop, invite all of those that bid on the project to come forward and then have GLS go over the bid packages with us, just to help us understand, um, the bidding process and to make sure that, that, that is what the court wants to do. That is my motion.
All right, so as far as, we have 60 days from when the bids are turned in to, um, make the final decision. So that's coming up pretty quick. So, you know, we've got to have a workshop early next week to be able to get the 60 days. So is that something that's doable for?
Uh, sorry, I don't have a problem with it if, if, I guess you're legal or you're current, I think, finishes, something that's, that was, I guess, put into the, how the project was procured, I don't think. So typically if you have qualifications and they're kind of listed on there, and, you know, GLS, that's a, uh, uh, but it also would say something along the line, if the county chooses to have interviews or, you know, past, uh, recommendations, then it's usually something that's, you know, that everybody at the bidding knows about. I'm sure everybody that's wasn't low would be thrilled to come in and get another side of, there's, you know, something different, but, uh, ask your specialists. I'm available today.
Yeah, so we did consult our legal, and they said that is an option, because some of the bids, I think, one of which was yours, in the bid summary, you didn't fill out any wording at all on your bid amounts, you didn't put any wording, you didn't put any numerical value, you put the words, see bid schedule on every one of those. So those are different than what the bid package asked for. So what we're trying to understand and want to make sure that we're being fair to all bidders, even the ones that were immediately discarded by GLS, is that we don't make a mistake, it will come back, we're not the county or GLS in the fact that we did do our due process, we did get everyone's same, same offer pages.
Yeah, I think the common practice for that is to come in and negotiate with the low bidder, um, before, to clarifying questions that may be asked and, you know, in, in our, I think that's the common practice, I don't know if I'm saying, I think that's the way we all read this.
Uh, I don't want to rehash on this, I think everybody understands where we're at at the table with the way the numbers were presented and everything, but, uh, as the volunteer of HB 0, and also as, as the taxpayer in this county, um, I have a little bit of heartache about, you guys put a bid package out and you asked to complete the bid package, and there were six bidders that turned in numbers on this package, and only one of them completed the entire bid package, not a lot of them. Why should that person be punished for doing what you guys asked? In writing, through a bid package, we turned in every number that was there, every bid that was there, every bid form that was there, all the qualifications, as well as we were competitive on our kitchen equipment, which I think you gotta know is likely to come out of your pocket. Uh, so the taxpayer side of me asks, why are we going with a 30% higher number? Why, why is that something that we're recommending as a number that's 30% higher than what's coming out of the taxpayers' pocket while the project was in budget for the base bid? And when you guys ask for qualifying bid, qualifying bid is put out in that package by you guys, which was completed by us and no one else that I'm aware of completed that entire package. So, with, with all due respect to, to other bidders and everything, I think following the instructions at bid time is a crucial part of this, of this bidding process.
Well, Commissioner Proud, you made the motion to, uh, have a one shot, bring everybody in, uh, I'll go ahead and second that motion. That way we can get, which is why they're one split, uh, that way it'll be a full, full court, won't make any decisions. So, uh, Commissioner Proud made the motion, I second. All in favor?
All against.
So, we're gonna schedule, we've got two holidays coming up, so we gotta schedule it in. Maybe we can get, uh, notice everybody in time to get there.
All right.
Joan, I'll send it to the email site, sign in on the sign sheet, the opening, so just be looking for a back person to come back.
Okay. All right, item number four, discuss status of payment from Jasper County through the Newton County Veterans Office and take any appropriate action. Danny, you put that on?
Well, Chief Paul, I don't know what, uh, what one is looking at. Well, Jasper County was given 8,000 a year to the F W, and, uh, our Veterans Office went over there and basically told them that they were breaking the law and made a man. So I'm still trying to work with Jasper County to get the paper table, you know, the F W uh, there no longer. So we're still working with Jasper County, trying to get that money that was paid to the F W to our Veterans Office, officer, because he had his cases in both Jasper and Newton County. But basically the holdup was, he went over there and rubbed in the wrong way, I'd say.
So, so I talked to him on the sidewalk coming in here, and what he was telling me was this, this money, and he said 10,000, 8,000, I'm not sure what he said, he said this is a grant that Jasper County received. I'm not sure, I'm not either, so definitely what I was told about, don't know if it'd be factual, but he said this is a grant that they received that went to their veterans program, that they disbanded. He said, if they don't roll that money back, if they don't forward the money to Newton County to be using the veterans program, that it's gonna roll over into the general fund, which may or may not be, okay, it seemed like it was a grant, but it wasn't spent and go back to the provider, but, but, uh, it just seems unfair, you know, Jasper County's not doing their poor, help the veterans and pour Newton County money back up. It appears to me that Jasper County's not doing what they should be doing to that, help the veterans, and Newton County's sitting over here with a third of the budget, and our DA officer, as you all have talked about so many times, hears people from Jasper and all over to Galveston and Hanes, so anything we did, we have to give him the money there. Just being provided, the veterans, and we need to do it.
You know, that's the lack of treatment Jasper, the District Court. Well, I say, he, he upset some folks over there when he went over there.
Well, maybe they need to be upset, it sounds like they need to be upset.
We're just trying to work through that. I had it all worked out, until he made a visit. So it's all...
That's where we at on that.
We just wanted to say.
All right.
Through court.
All right, item number five is approve 2025 budget amendment for District Attorney's Office SB 22 fund to allocate funds that were not previously budgeted to an approved expense.
So, uh, Senate Bill 22 is still on a bid learning curve, uh, we're still, still learning, I think Sherwood, they keep changing, or just keep clarifying where there's a debate, and they say, okay, well, actually goes on that, and, um, anyway, so recently we learned that, um, this, just for the prosecutor's office, we can use it for personnel only, you know, we can't use it for any supplies or equipment, however, the benefits package is disallowed. So we're, like, for Misty's salary, it's her entire salary, but I also budgeted for her insurance and all of her benefits. Well, now they're saying we can use Senate bill money for one of us, so the county...
No, no, for it, but we can use it for Misty's, because she was a new employee, we can, all of hers. So in, I'll let me, in 2024, we just come...
Can you, can you come over here and test the court, the F W?
All right, so...
If attorney said, I can't, you're not allowed to show.
They're finalized their report that we have to do at the end of every year. So we just finished 2024, and we're going to have to pay back to the compteur's office like 5,642 dollars over what we thought was going to be allowable expense on other employees is, is not. So my recommendation to court, E, was go back and try to budget that on salaries so that we can use that money instead of have to pay it back every year, over 175,000. Yes, it was on other employees. Misty's gonna pay for everything, but other employees, they will not, yes.
So the supplements that I divided, which was other people?
Yes, is where that, that's...
So their supplement, so whatever I budgeted from Misty's salary, including the benefits package, the leftover money I split between my employees to give them the supplement, but also their benefits, so their FICA and...
There's FICA, um, retirement, yes. I knew they weren't gonna pay the insurance, but I felt like the others, they would, but they're, they don't.
The benefits on those supplements, so the fact the county wasn't paying the benefits on top of those supplements.
Right. And it was like 5,000, like I said, it was, I just finalized the numbers with her and she was fine with that, we will have to cut them a check. Right now they're saying, just hold on to it, with us holding on to it, just know that every bit of the interest that we collect from the time we have from here till then, we have to pay the interest that's, we're being paid from the bank. So we do have to, and I, with the interest today, which through the month of 11, 11 of 2025, it was 5,000 in 642 ownership on that, is what I have at circle one, yes, but I sent it to Nego at the compteur's office. Now with that moving forward, we're having to start on the sheriff's office. But we do want to rebudget her 5,000 dollars for 2025, get a budget amendment so that we can spend that, basically just keep line on transfers. We're gonna pull it from those where we budgeted at the beginning of the year and put it towards where she directs me to go.
It's the, pretty much with Misty's salary.
Okay. And then also I'd like to, well, here, John Burke's last day was the 30th, he's got a month of SB 22 that we want to pull away and give to, is that Misty or Brittany or?
Well, so John will have to pay out to all of his vacation time.
They will not pay that. I don't think they'll pay that, because it was before the SB 22. You see what I'm saying?
So he paid his time, your...
If he, yes, yes, because he will not have...
He got this year, this is supposed to...
Yeah, because he's not gonna have the whole month of December, you're not gonna pay him, and that's where that SB 22 money was put, they're not gonna pay the past year.
So, for twenty-five, that money is still going towards the benefits package for Misty in the twenty-five.
Okay. And then twenty-six, we'll discuss.
Yeah, back in twenty-six.
So, just for our viewing audience, which is wrong today, which is probably shouldn't get. So, so the money, the SB twenty-two money that was provided by the state of Texas and no charge to the county, to the DA's office, was how much?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that can only be used for salaries for your office. That was done as part of the state incentive of small rural counties, not counties, right? Because it was based to employ professionals at office fortune aid. Same thing for the sheriff's department. We've seen advances in our sheriff's department, we've paid, this is SB twenty-two money provided by the state of money, by the state. Now, it's our tax dollars, so it's not the state giving anything other than what we pay, but it's not local county tax dollars. It's got, it's money from the state of Texas. How much was given to the sheriff's department?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred, how much of that is, is a court going to have to reimburse?
We have not even finished the report yet. We just started on the sheriff's.
So it's five thousand for a hundred and?
Yeah, but the, one thing about the sheriff's report, we can, he can use his to buy equipment, safety, vehicles, anything other. She's the only one that has a guideline just for salaries that they can.
I understand.
The sheriff's office has pretty much utilized all of them.
So do you think that, that money for the benefits, will it be able to be used for the benefits for the sheriff's department?
Well, he has bought equipment that we, we're working with them to cover that equipment.
Right.
So then, guess it could be reallocated.
That's what I meant.
It could be reallocated for that.
And for twenty-five, I think that, but it's for twenty-four, then we didn't know that until now, because our twenty-four expenditures have not been given that. But for twenty-five, now I'm reallocated to, but to an allowable extent, which is salary and not benefits.
Right.
It seems absurd that the state of Texas missed this, because.
Or maybe give us a point.
Part of the salary is your benefits. You don't hire them, and somebody say, we're gonna pay you this, but your benefits don't count. Yeah, that's just.
Yeah.
Well, when, when Senate first approved the money, you know, they threw it out there, there was no gap.
Yeah.
So, you know, the basic guidelines, you know, this is what you, what you use it for. Well, then they came back and they wrote the rules after they gave them.
And they're still writing the rules.
Yeah, they're still, they're still writing and changing the rules.
And some of the schools we've been to, they, they even talked about, you know, across the state of Texas, judges and commissioners court basically taking away from the sheriff's department because they were getting this, we got the least amount, I think, in our, in our sheriff's department across the state. But the courts didn't understand the process, like you said, the rule, and it's, well, you get three fifty, so we're gonna pull a hundred back. So they're even talking about saying, in the future, it's gonna be a standalone, those straight.
And I think there was probably an email that came out the last couple of weeks, pretty much giving the sheriff the right to do, they should have come to the comptroller's office, to the judge's office, because I've been seeing emails quite a many. I haven't seen it because they go to your office, but there should be where you change over, you change your name to.
Yes, and I just received that.
Yes, so it should have come out.
And the intent of that was where the court could not, could not manipulate or use that money for anything, it went straight to the sheriff to be used to supplement his or her department, so. And that was a change after the fact, so, yeah, it is evergreen.
This is the second or third time I've had to come back and change it.
Yes.
In twenty-four, I had to because they hadn't come out with the rules, so I didn't know it could only be salaries, so I.
And it had to be so certain positions, because you had saved like twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
For a part-time.
For a part-time admin person. Well, she can't use it for admin. She can only use it for.
Criminal coordinators, investigators, prosecutors.
Yes.
Or attorneys. But anyway, so I set some aside for that, so you're gonna have to bring out, see what are the supplements turned around, and then, because they just, they didn't come out with any rules, and gave us the money, and then said, what you can do with it.
And having to fight, having to battle these complications later, it's worth five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the county. You know, if we gotta pay a little bit back, we're still getting half a million dollars, quote unquote, free money, again, it's our tax dollars at the state level, but.
For the sheriff's department, they can use it for like vehicles, any kind of important property, enhance jail or salary, patrol deputies, admission. It is.
And Colton and I talked the other day, and he, we fell off, he said, I think it may be easier for us to go back and use the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the items versus the salaries. Because when they first came out, they said we couldn't use them as a stock, and we had to use them, we had to put it with our salaries. Well, now they're coming back saying, oh, no, it's gonna be separated out. So, we didn't separate it out at the sheriff's office. We did with yours, I just put the SB twenty-two line, but the sheriffs didn't, so Colton said, I think it may be easier on us if we just pay salaries that we have and use the three hundred and fifty thousand for the items, like the vehicles and the, all the, all the things that they need, because, I mean, they spend that much.
But, I mean, the point was, the intention was, you're not gonna cut your sheriff's department at all.
No, no, they may be looking at our files and see.
Three hundred and fifty thousand to that.
Yes.
So the court couldn't, what happened across the state, the courts went in and tried to take some away, because they'd get some. The county was smart enough not to do that, we hit the sheriff's department, we just, here's the three hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but the problem, yeah, and the problem that we had was the personnel not in the sheriff's office in twenty-four and twenty-five, not be, or actually the twenty, from twenty-three to twenty-four, loss of personnel and trying to keep up, this one only worked half a year, so you compare salary in twenty-four to twenty-three, it was, it's been a nightmare, I'm telling you. I've lost, lost sleep over that.
It's crazy, the five thousand that they have to pay back from twenty-four, they don't have a way to receive it.
No, they can't, they're like, you just hold on to that money, you hold on, and at the very end, you, send me your bank statement, how much money that you've, interest you've received off of it and pay us this amount. So, basically that's what they're gonna, a lot of counties are.
And most counties are probably paying back a lot more.
Way, are a lot more than what we are, because the guidelines were not addressed at the very beginning. They throw money at you and then come back and want it back.
I think population is over, because some of the counties got five hundred, but it's based on population. Newton County got three hundred and fifty for the sheriff's department and a hundred and seventy-five.
I have a lady that's working our, our reports, she says she has like five hundred hundred of this that she's having to go back and do. Five hundred reports, that's crazy.
So it's two hundred and fifty-four counties, so that basically, times two.
Yeah, yeah.
Every county's having.
They want to go back and do this.
So, five hundred and five hundred, we'll be a selector of the four counties, and we'll come back to the quarter of twenty-six, once I figure out the answer to that.
Okay.
All right. Now, I think you're up for the next one, it's got my name on it.
Well, we gotta, we still gotta do this.
Okay. Motion made by Rich Thompson, def, stated by Professor Benson, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right. Item number six, proceed to report on Newton County's Adult Sexual Assault Response Team, SART, as mandated by the eighty Southwest. I seen it this morning, I'm like, hey, what's this?
Why does it have my name?
Yeah, it has my name on it.
Okay, so, like the judge said, in twenty twenty-one, the legislature mandated that all counties form a sexual assault response team. This is for adult-related sex assault cases, not children. And I think most people want to think of sex assault cases being children, and so they want to have special focus on adult victims. And so they mandated that all counties form a SART team that includes the prosecutor, law enforcement. Our team also includes someone from the guardhouse, a sex assault, a nurse examiner, and it's a chance for us to kind of roundtable, make sure that we're all trained on how to handle these cases, make sure that the, the cases are consistently handled for resources and prosecution. And if it's a smaller county, you're able to form a, a regional SART. So we teamed up with Jasper County, and so we presented this to the court two years ago. It requires a report to the court every two years, about this of her first, and then this report goes to the state. So Jasper County is also presenting theirs to their commissioners' court. But you can see our SART report that we, I don't think that anybody else is helping that needs one, but it has our membership, our goals, and, and we report our numbers to the state. You can see that for the previous reporting period, which was September twenty-three through August of twenty-five, for Newton County, it's not very common to have an, a adult victim, an adult victim of sex assault. So, you look through the numbers and see what we reported, including all of our law enforcement agencies, and what Jasper has reported. We attended a training, probably about a month ago, two months, I don't know if it was two months ago, where Brittany Garrison, who is a sex assault nurse examiner, came in, and we refreshed ourselves on the process that the victims go through, and, you know, had a chance to kind of, we broke into groups, had a chance to kind of roundtable on situations that we have within our counties, and how we handle it, how do we make sure that we're, that we're consistent. But, and Tyler County was there, Orange County, just to make sure that everybody's being held accountable, and it's a good idea to roundtable on this. We do that already for children, sex assault victims, we do that monthly, and we have a meeting with CBS, law enforcement, the same to guardhouse, same exam, nurse. And so we do that monthly for juveniles, for children, victims, but this is a special team that's for all victims. So I just need you to, basically acknowledge that our team is meeting, that we're doing what we're tasked with doing for the legislature, and keeping our report, and keeping our numbers together, and we will send this off to the state.
So, my, my understanding is this is not what's been prosecuted, this is not what's reproved guilty, this is what, this one here says, reported to the DA. So this is a report from these different agencies to their office, right?
Correct.
And during this time period, you've received a, for adults.
For adults, correct.
Support. And at that same time period, it looks like Jasper County and Twinket County, BBs received a toll.
And we, they report their numbers to Brittany's criminal office, I'm, I guess I'm kind of like the, I don't know, Lindsay, President, or I guess I'm kind of in charge of our, our group for now, and Brittany's.
It says you're the president.
Who knows?
Your Brittany is the secretary.
Oh, yeah, you know the president. I'm not that, I'm not a title. So, and the deal was to alternate with Jasper County, like, for two years I would do it, and then Jasper County would do it for two years, so I think I know.
It says, who's the president?
Okay, well.
Angela, who was last president, and Brittany is the secretary.
Now, Brittany is the secretary, she's the senior, she can call those for it. So if anyone asks your question, or, um, Jasper reports their numbers to us, and so they, they don't specify what, you know, details of their case, so I don't know how it's, it's kind of disproportionate that they would have that many adult victims, but that's what they reported to us. Next time I come to you, I'll have a different president, I'll, Jasper, Jasper doing the wrong side.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I'll get a phone toll. It's good, it's good, we have some money from all of these different agencies that come in, we, we're supposed to do four hours of training a year, so we started out trying to do quarterly meetings for an hour, but we decided this year to just do a four-hour training, so we did like a nine to one, just knock it all out in one day, and had a couple different speakers, and did one big training to make sure that we're staying up to date.
All right, well, thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions on?
So, and I'll just say, the county commissioners' court, they're responsible for ensuring that we are doing our report and we're sending it home here. So it holds us accountable and highlights the importance of our work in the community and allows the court to meet your own reporting deadline for the sex assault survivors task force. So apparently y'all have a task force to there, supposed to report it. Still kind of, kind of like the SB twenty-two, there's, this is a new thing too, where actually two years ago, I brought to court and presented it, but we didn't know that you had to send it yourself to the state. And so the state shows that we didn't turn on in, but we sent it after the fact, because we have it, presented it, so we just didn't know that, anyway, so it's a learning process in a way. Anyway, so we'll, we'll upload it and send it off, so the court will recover the data on your sex assault.
When you say the court makes it responsible for sending, is it the judge's office or is it the commissioners' court? Because as commissioners' court, we need to have more discussion on it, because I don't like being responsible for something I don't know very well about. If your office is taking care of our business, I don't want to know more about it, you know, depending on schedule.
I don't know your responsibilities and what you're responsible for. I know that I'm responsible for presenting it to the court, and the court to acknowledge that we done our part, and then I send it off to the state. So, I don't know where.
We do note and receive.
You basically don't.
You do it, I agree, yeah. Doing, basically.
Yeah, I think they'll just accept it, accept my report.
Yes.
You have to.
Send off. Like I said, we'll do the, do the note and accept the report.
Don't think there's a place to sign or anything.
For the Newton Jasper County Adult Sexual Assault Response.
Yes, the staff's responsible for it, it's theirs, we will submit it as a regional SART. At least I'll meet you in person, I'll learn and first, right? Newton Jasper, Jasper always thinks they're.
Thank you very much.
They're better.
All right.
Judge, did you make a motion to accept?
Yes. I said I made a motion to be note and accept the report from Jasper, didn't get a sexual assault response team. You said, I second. All right. All in favor? All against? All right, item number seven, is budget amendment.
Okay, I have a budget amendment, we moved thirty-two thousand dollars from the O-one account, and continue to fund to the courthouse emergency grant fund. We actually have forty-two thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars in that fund already, so I'm only going to move thirty-two thousand to be able to pay the seventy-two thousand dollar, it's seventy-one thousand.
Eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight, is what I have to pay.
And like, like I said, we're.
And then we're going to go back and get fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Water line, um, the sprinkling line is sort of leaking on Friday, when we come to the courthouse on Monday, they just wanted them on the floor. So, Surfer came in and mostly bunches of aluminum tiles.
We need to be really careful from what I was told, from any, the, any time that happens, do not call them, because they could have reused all of that.
Yeah.
Those products.
Yeah, we.
We know now, we're getting them in.
I'm calling Surfer.
Yeah, I said, do not, do not.
But those, those are.
Do not.
Two, about two aluminum tiles, and they were no longer manufactured, so we had to get a company, or they had to get a company to build a stamp to make the tiles, and they had to go back to what was in the business, per the historical commission, and it took like nine months. It was, and it cost, that's the reason it cost you so bad.
So, this is like the second time that I've known that you have water related and root cost saving. Should we look at some sort of monitoring system out there, moisture or something?
Well, we probably do, sometimes. The, actually wasn't the sprinkling line, it was, this was one of the water lines of air conditioner, or we got, chill thermal units, so the water lines started to, so actually, cans on the air conditioner do have water, or, you know, along, they'll shut the. do have water, or, you know, alarm, they'll shut the unit down, which is.
Why not buzz the fan?
Yeah, so the unit's shut down, but the water kept leaking, running the fan over and coming down.
You just think it's days, technology, somebody had some sort of duty for one of the moisture lines to pick up, you know, moisture and that.
Yeah, and when even where it said where such pumps down in the basement, where it's not circulating the water. Fill the air conditioner, wake you up and. Well, it depends on the weekend, we'll, we'll know when you come in, it'll both ease the fuel on the board. But then we found some of the sprinkler parts that rusted through over there and started to break. So we got those to play. Paying the bills.
Did you have pretty much a budget made?
All right, I need a motion. We approve the budget amendments, as Sherri has stated. All right.
Begging.
All right, motion to approve the budget amendments made by Commissioner Hoffman, seconded by Commissioner Benson. All in favor?
Uh.
All against. All right. Item number eight, payment of bills.
Okay, general fund, one hundred five thousand, one hundred eighty-one thousand seventeen cents. Roding Bridge General, seventy dollars. Roding Bridge precinct four, three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Commission special precinct one, two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Commissioner special precinct two, fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Commissioner special precinct three, five, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Commissioner special precinct four, ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Solid waste disposal, three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Newton County Lottery, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents. For a total of all funds, one hundred, forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents, plus the seventy-one thousand if you want it breached.
So I do want to just let the court, I did buy concrete solid, we'll go to the parents, we'll let the horse. Run for duty for a small, I'm gonna figure.
I hear you, son. Come on.
Now it's available if you need it. I gotta figure it out, buying cheaper than the rest of the town.
Best motion we can pay the bill. All right, motion made by Commissioner Benson, seconded by Commissioner. All in favor?
Uh.
All against. All right, so they move on, move left, so, fight motion will return. All right.